It's Halloween, it's pretty close to Halloween.
Councillor David Givernaro?
Present.
Councillor Barbara Casey?
Here.
Councillor Vincent Howell?
Yes, here.
Councillor David A. Ulivary Jr.?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you very much.
President, please. We stand by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every human being just for all.
Come through, Ulivary.
A moment of silence for someone that was resident at the past month. Some relatives to our family. Keep them all in mind in prayers.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ulivary. Next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
The approval of the agenda.
Councillor Casey, do you have a second?
Second.
Councillor Ulivary Jr.?
Yes.
Councillor Merrill?
Yes.
Councillor Casey?
Yes.
Councillor Howell?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councillor Casey, a second by Councillor Howell, thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much.
Something's happening.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of August the 8th and August 15th, 2018. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board, and those are with amended recommendations, correct? Yes, ma'am. Okay. Pleasure of the board, approval. Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. Councillor Merrill?
Yes.
Councillor Casey?
Yes.
Councillor Howell?
Yes.
Councillor Ulivary Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councillor Casey, a second by Councillor Howell and Councillor Ulivary Jr., thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
If I may make a statement, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we don't have an attorney today, Mr. Silva has taken ill, and so our thoughts and prayers are with him as well. Ms. Smith was not available, and Ms. Gardunio was unavailable as well. But I will, if you have any questions, I will take them on, we have Ms. Gardunio starting on September 24th, which is Monday. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
And I do appreciate the consideration of the council, of course, thank you very much. Continue.
Mayor's appointments and reports?
I have none at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mayor's recognitions and proclamations?
None at this point in time, but I will hopefully next month. Well, thank you. We have one person on the agenda, Ms. Ursula Garcia on the Lions Club information. Yes. Good evening, Ms. Garcia, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me, I'm Ursula Garcia, District Governor for the Northern New Mexico Lions, and I'm just gonna be real quick, I just wanted to come in and introduce myself, and thank you for having me here in your town, we've been kind of exploring Las Vegas. We're here to restructure the Las Vegas club, and we specialize in community service organization. And not being from Las Vegas, we don't really know exactly what your community needs, but you all know exactly what your community needs, whether that be the kids needing glasses, or new shoes, or is there a drug problem here in town, we're not really sure, so that's exactly what we need your help with, to help us know exactly what you need. So, we're gonna be having a meeting tonight, I know you guys are really busy, but we're gonna be having a short video meeting tonight at K-Bobs at 6:30. We're gonna be restructuring the club, there's already a club here, so we're gonna keep their old traditions, and we're gonna be implementing some new ideas, fresh ideas, if there's anybody that's interested, I have a couple brochures here that I can just pass out. We are international, we're all around the world, we have an eye bank here in New Mexico, we do eye transplants, we do stability dogs for the elderly people if they need help with that, we do eyeglasses 100%, anything we earn goes 100% back into the community, nothing goes in anybody's pockets or anything. We are a disaster relief program, so we're right up there with the Red Cross, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, could you give those brochures to your board, you're still a handy officer, counsel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a question? Councillor Howell has a question.
Ms. Garcia, so who do we call to give the ideas of our needs?
We will, I'll have my information on here, so if you want to, there's emails on here, phone numbers, but once we have the new club, there's a man that lives here, his name is Leon Hareta, and he has a dog place here, he trains dogs and stuff like that, and he's gonna be our main contact here in Las Vegas. So, I welcome everybody and anybody, we work really close with the police department in Raton, and the Independent Riders, and the Motorcycle Christian Gang over there, and we fill up over 400 bikes every year for the Run for the Wall, and they go through, and we do a lot of organization, works closely with the Chamber, Main Street, I was talking with a fellow out here from Main Street, we all work really close together, so it's nice to...
Do you mainly focus on children?
We do everything and anything that works for your community, so, like I said, we don't know exactly what Las Vegas needs, you know, if the kids need shoes, then yes, if it's your elderly that needs their houses painted, then that's what Las Vegas would say, well, let's focus on our elderly, or let's focus on the drug problem that we have in town. That's what you all would have to get together and discuss. And we also, we have lots and lots of grants, I would love to see a Fisher House go up in Albuquerque, there's a Fisher House in Denver that helped my dad so much when he was sick, and I would love to see one go up in Albuquerque, we just have to get the grant matched to do that. So, something like that could be comparable with whatever you guys needed to match here in Las Vegas. But we need a club to do that, we can't just, you know...
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public input. And we can now move on to presentations, and it's presentation by Police Chief Chris Lopez.
I know Officer Casalos running a bit late, I think I just seen him walking in now. Apologies.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here, each and every one of you.
Thank you for having us, Madam Mayor, counsel. We're here today, you know, proudly to present Officer Daniel Casalos with the Employee of the Quarter Award for his hard work and dedication towards the police department. You know, before we get to that point, I just kinda wanted to, you know, reiterate on the great job that the entire force is doing. I know more recently, I guess it's been a few months now, we did ask them, you know, to pick up, you know, their output and what they're doing, and we have seen increases in their work and their dedication towards the job, which is, you know, I'm very proud to be a part of. Again, you know, I think I've stressed it a few times, but, you know, it's hard to walk away from the department, you know, with my future plans and everything, but especially when I see the hard work and dedication that these young fine officers are putting forth every day in a time that's very difficult, you know. Our stats have went up, and like I said before, they're doing a tremendous job, and they're doing a tremendous job for me, and I firmly believe that they're gonna do a tremendous job for the incoming chief as well, so, you know, I'm very glad to stress that, and, you know, with that being said, I'll let Commander Padilla, who oversees field operations right now, have a few words as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, officers. Like Chief Lopez says, I mean, a lot of times we work a very thankless job, so we gotta make sure that we, as leadership of the department, take care of our troops, because their reflection is obviously a reflection of us. That being said, Officer Casalos has shined, has been a great asset to the department, his reflection is... Clearly, like Chief said, I put out a memo to the lieutenants to pick an individual from our department, not only just an officer, but somebody in the department that is well deserving of recognition, and that choice was made by Lieutenant Monica Vehil, who she chose with Officer Daniel Casalos, because of his hard work, his dedication to the community, that he is well deserving of this Officer of the Quarter Award.
And like Commander Padilla was stressing, when we look at this, we look at not just, you know, the work that he's doing, but also his commitment to the people, you know, complaints, extra work that he's doing, you know, to serve the department in a capacity as not just an officer, but as a citizen of the community as well, and, you know, with that being said, we're really proud of Officer Casalos, and we definitely wanted to bring him up here today to recognize him for his hard work and efforts, as he's shining right now to us.
Thank you very much, did you want to bring him up, do you have a presentation? Do you have a plaque?
Yes, we do, we prepared a certificate for him.
To Daniel Casalos, Police Officer, Christopher Lopez, interim Chief of Police, Employee of the Quarter. Officer Casalos, recently Lieutenant Monica Vehil nominated you for the Employee of the Quarter 2018. Employee of the Quarter nominations are based on either specific acts of unusual, victorious service, a specific project of significance to community, city, or department, or sustained superior performance of assigned duties. With Lieutenant Vehil's nomination, and with some of her highlights listed below, it was clear you are deserving of this recognition. Lieutenant Vehil wrote, Officer Daniel Casalos is worthy of this nomination. Officer Casalos has been left in charge in the absence of Sergeant David Treheal and I, with Officer Casalos' confidence, experience, and maturity, I believe he is capable of this responsibility. Officer Casalos maintains a consistent level of self-initiated activity which can be validated by watch reports. I believe Officer Casalos has had no discipline in the past year 2017 and none for 2018. Officer Casalos works hard and is always willing to help fellow officers with their investigations. With that being said, Officer Casalos understands that our 12-hour day can easily become a 14- or 16-hour day, whether it's his case or he is assisting, he does this without complaining. Within the past three months, he has expressed an interest in becoming the SFST instructor, which can be hard to find with officers. Officer Casalos has conducted numerous DWI investigations, and has done a number of these with self-initiation. I have seen Officer Casalos take new hires, FDOs, under his wing with patience and strict fairness. I have seen him speak his mind to fellow officers and contribute his knowledge to cases. My hope is that Officer Casalos continues on this path, stays motivated and positive. I hope in the future Officer Casalos has an opportunity to test for Patrol Sergeant. With that being said, I feel any lieutenant would be fortunate to have him as a sergeant running at a platoon. Officer Casalos, your leadership and dedication sets an example to all employees. We are fortunate to have such a dependable, innovative, and dedicated professional, and you are deserving of this award. You bring great credit upon yourself, your family, and fellow officers. In this way, the performance of your duties keeps the highest value of the Las Vegas Police Department. A copy of this document will be placed in your personnel file.
The next presentation, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is by the Community Development Staff on Film Industry and Marketing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. So, we're here today to do a presentation on a film, I have film media campaign, because that's kind of what we're doing right now, but it's more of a media strategic plan that we're working on, so, as you all know, we no longer have Sisnetos. So, since then, that was in January that we got that letter from Sisnetos Design, and so we've been doing a lot of stuff in-house, well, we've been doing pretty much everything in-house now. And so, what I wanted to do is come to you and kind of give you an update, and let you guys know how it's going, what we're working on, and what we're planning for the future, and so that you know where we're at at this point. It's been six months since that happened, and so, that's the idea, is to kind of just give you an update on what we're looking at. So, again, we're kind of looking at the strategy moving forward, what we're gonna do with our marketing, design campaigns, film campaigns, and also, I kind of wanted to get an overview of the team. Of course, the team consists of a lot more than what I have, but that's what we're looking at now. And a lot of our projects are based around organizations, around building the community, building the city, making people recognize us, so that we can get more people in here, and of course, that helps with our economic development, and we build off of that. So, one of our things is building relationships in our community. I know when I first came in, a lot of what I was hearing was that there wasn't that relationship with the community, there wasn't that relationship with leaders, with other organizations, and so on and so forth, so that's something that I've really worked on in the past years, trying to make sure that we can build those relationships with everybody again. As you guys know, I like to be everywhere, talking to everybody, so that's something that I really enjoy doing. So, one of the things is, we're looking at is creating a plan. We started doing that, we've been doing that for a while now. So, we're looking at problem opportunity with marketing and film, we're looking for solutions, a lot of those are new innovative design, or innovative campaigns, I should say. So, we're looking to bring in more of the technology that hasn't been brought into the city before. Also, you know, the projected results, looking at some, like, you know, historical tourism, how is that working for us, getting analysis on that kind of stuff, the film tourism, I mean, economic development, all in general, and how that's gonna help in the future. So, those are a few things, just starting off, I'm gonna try to go through this fast because I know I'm gonna leave room for Angie. But, so, leading the team, I kind of wanted to just let you guys know, you know, of course, I'm Virginia Maruho, the media coordinator, and then we have Angelica, we could call her Angie Gepse Lister, and she's newest to the team. She's our new event planner and film liaison, and been working very hard to make sure that everything gets done and updated in a properly manner. We also have a new one, Elise Salas, who's coming in, she's a student through the student program that we're taking on board. Her major is business marketing, she's also had a lot of film production background, and she's, well, her major is business and her minor is marketing, is what it is, so we're looking to help her out, we have a project from beginning to end for her to work on to kind of teach her, and it helps us as well. Of course, we have Levi, Johan, Alex, Alan Tan, Jeremiah, Gutierrez, Maria, Penaia, and Shani Martinez. A lot of those are new, but the reason I put them in there is because we all work together as a team, it doesn't matter what it is. If we want to put signs up, of course, we go to Maria, if we want to do it properly, we go to Levi, if we want to make sure that no dogs are gonna go tear it apart, we go to Alex, and we go to Jeremiah. And then, of course, Valerie is, she's like our head of the department, she helps with everything in there. Yvette Gonzalez, the reason I put her in there is because she's with the Visitor Center, so we've been working on how do we use this marketing to our advantage with the Visitor Center as well, what can we do for the Visitor Center that's gonna make it more attractive? Can we, you know, partner with somebody who's already kind of doing those things, and it's less expense on, you know, the organization and the city itself? So, that's why I kind of put her in, and then, of course, Robert Archuleta, we throw him everywhere we can find space for him, whether it's Sound, helping us put posters, anything like that. We have Chris, Ernest, and Zach, who are not in our department, but they help us with the majority of our stuff, and we really appreciate them. And that's kind of the team just at hand, so you get an idea of how we've really been working together, and we've been trying to pull everybody together to make sure we get things done properly. And then, of course, City Manager and the Clerk's Office, we deal with this on a daily basis. Film marketing strategy, what we're looking at is who is our audience, we're creating personas, and looking at competitor analysis. When we do that, for example, we have Miguel Diaz, Tina Chavez, we see one of them likes hiking, biking, boating, fishing, of course, they're gonna fit with our outdoor adventures campaign. We have someone that has photography, scouting for film, of course, they're gonna go more with our film scouting campaign, and so, all these little details kind of give us an idea of who we want to attract, where we're gonna go with it, and who we're gonna bring into the community. Competitors analysis, we look at different places, what they're doing, what they did to get to where they are. We're working with Hot Springs right now, with the UWC, to see how we can, you know, work together to keep that going properly. Caliente, can't talk tonight, they have hot springs, of course, they made it more commercialized, we're not looking to do that, but those are just some things that we look at when we're working on this. As far as the marketing, we no longer have the design firm, so we're kind of doing everything in-house, like I mentioned. We did get an event coordinator and film liaison, so it kind of allows us to work on more, since there's two of us working on things instead of one. Also, we look at, you know, what are the selling points for Las Vegas, what's the history, what's the history behind the film, what's the future for these things? Experimental design, changing the website, interactivity through social media. I don't know if you guys know a lot about experimental design or interactivity design. I was part of one of the main exhibits, that's at the New Mexico History Museum in Albuquerque, and we took something like creating, taking the Four Theories Alive and creating the emergence exhibit out of it and displaying those, but using light sensors is what I actually used to create that and build, you know, the boards so people can touch it, and then the information would line up in boxes and such. But that's more of what interactive design is, so we're looking to see how to incorporate As far as the marketing, well, all the things that we ended up picking up was website, social media, billboards, print, and film. I am not gonna touch too much on all of them, because I'll keep you guys here all night, and I just kind of want to go over briefly of what we're doing. So, I'm gonna use the website as an example tonight to kind of give you an overall view of what's going on, but before I do that... We have put together... We put together some folders which have a lot of this information. So, when you first open it up, the first one you're gonna see is gonna have a bunch of graphs and details and such, all our analytic information in there. So, when we're doing the website, some of the things we looked at was, like I talked about, design and activity, SEO, which is search engine optimization. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but that's how we pull people from Google, Yahoo, wherever they're searching to come into our website, and the possibilities we have for the future. So, with interactivity, I don't know if you guys have been to our new website, we launched it in March, but we have things like Fishity, you can actually go onto this on our website, you can look at this particular app, see where people are fishing in the surrounding areas, what kind of fish they caught, how big they were, you can share your photos. A lot of that, and the mural tours, you could go see where the murals are, you can get information on them. A lot of these, we had help from Lee Einer, of course, he's not with us anymore, but he did pass on this to us so we can continue it, which is really nice, because it's a nice feature to our website. We also have menus, we're almost done putting all the menus from all the restaurants, of course, we keep getting new restaurants and things, so we keep having to add, but it's okay, that's, we keep this going with it. Also, video, we've been trying to do a lot more video in all the different aspects of the marketing. Damn Authentic, Old Trail's New Adventures, we've kind of laid back a little bit off of the Damn Authentic, then went with the Old Trail's New Adventures, and it's worked really, really well. We've had CCHP, we've had a lot of other people who actually really caught on to that one as well, and so they're even taking it and using it within their own stuff, of course, they come and talk to us about it, make sure it's okay. Search engine optimization, like I say, SEO is really about searching for those people online and pulling them into Vegas. Possibilities, getting new leads, returning leads, and so on. So, just real quick, again, you have a lot of these graphs and information analytics, our website, we have, our biggest portion comes from organic searches, so people are actually looking for us, some of them are direct, so those are people that just go directly to our website, know what it is already, and then we have a big portion for social media here, and then, of course, we have referrals. So, you could see, as far as direct referrals and social media, it's pretty even on that side, but the majority of them do come from searching for things like Casa Nada Hotel, Las Vegas, New Mexico, whatever it might be. We've had a huge increase in a lot of our information as far as looking at analytics. We used to have, where we would get a lot of older people, if you look at the graph, that's also in your packet, the majority of the people now looking into Las Vegas are all from ages about 25 to around 60 years old. So, we've got a huge wide range of people that we're looking at, and it's almost 50/50 as far as male female goes. So, we have a lot that we can offer to them, and it's nice to see that we can actually see who we're catering to at the moment. One of the biggest things is that we are now at 14,000 views, so... So, as you can see in there, we've increased our viewers by 62,500. And I believe that's a 69%. That's a huge percentage. It's really hard to get to that point, even people visiting sessions. Normally, people spend about 10 seconds. Normally, the most 30 seconds on a page. And we've got people who are staying up to a minute and 35 seconds. So, a lot of this interactivity and information that we're putting out now is really getting to these viewers. And you can see how our numbers kinda go up. That big dip up there is because that was during July, our biggest, you know, our biggest month of the year. So, that's what that one was. Now, just an idea before I get out of here, we get into a little bit of the film, is this is an idea of what, kind of a cost analysis of what we're saving now. So, when we had a firm, we were paying multiple places to run our website alone. This is just our website alone. Again, this does not include the social media, anything else that we were paying out. We were paying all these different places. Our total, total each year would come out to about 39,677. Now, doing it in-house, our costs come out to maybe about 10,000. That's if, and that's taking advantage of having new apps and, and having newsletters and a whole bunch of other things that we never had before. So, we're saving pretty much about, what, about $30,000, close to $30,000 each year just by doing it on our in-house now. So, that's a huge difference. And I haven't let that money sit there either, though. I've been using it for a lot of marketing things. We can, we can expand our marketing and what we're doing now instead of being very limited because of the costs for the, you know. So, that's basically the website. I just kinda wanted to go over a few things here. So, and I think it's the screen, but it's okay. So, we went into about social media. We do have an Instagram. We have a Twitter, and we have a Facebook that we're really focusing on right now. We'll probably add more once we get into it, but right now, those are the main ones. So, we also have various things within each of those. So, for example, with Facebook, we have our main visit Las Vegas, New Mexico. But then, we have a Blue Fest page. We have a newsletter page. We have Electric Light Parade. We have a Fiesta, Fiesta Parade, and so on and so forth. So, we have a lot going on. And then, I'm just gonna kinda skip that one, is a little more about Fiesta's. But the big one I wanted you guys to see is this one here. So, with the Facebook insights, what we did during the month of July is we decided, let's, let's really use this technology to our advantage. So, we did a lot of live feed videos. So, while the entertainers were playing, we were live streaming it right to Facebook. And people were loving it. They loved it. So much so that our views increased, were 11,470, which increased 576%. Our post engagements increased by 1,185%. Those videos got 9,268 views. So, nine, about 90,000 people were looking at our page during that time, watching our entertainment. That's an increase of 9,26,700%. I've never, in my whole entire time doing anything, has seen an increase like that. So, that's pretty amazing. I was shocked myself. So, that's just like some of the numbers, some of the things that we, we continue to work on. Of course, like I said, we do have other things like the billboards. The New Mexico True FY19 Grant, we just started. We finished the 18 and went on to the 19. And that does include some billboards. You can't really see it. The top one is from the FY19 grant. The bottom one is through Las Vegas First Independent Business Alliance, where we do get billboards with them as well. So, we have a total of seven all in all. We do have things with ads like New Mexico True Magazine, Amarillo Magazine. There's a whole bunch of other ones, but this is kind of what you see in those. And we recently just added the film ones. And so, like USA Today, which is doing a special with the Travel Channel, we jumped on board with that one. They, they really wanted us, and so, I was able to negotiate some really good. I'm not gonna tell you, but nobody will tell my guilt. We really worked into there. We, the National, which is on the Amtrak, is another one. So, we're hitting like 5 million a month, 5 million people a month. And that's just off of those two. That's not including everything else that we're doing. And that's not including the social media and all the other information. So, we've really worked hard to make sure that we get a lot of the, the marketing and the film and everything in place. And speaking of film, we are launching a new film campaign. That's part of what our new student's gonna do. We're gonna do it in three phases so that we can bring it back to par and up to date to where it needs to be. Because right now, in the film industry, we could be probably the biggest model for the film industry. But we have to take the steps. And actually, I'm gonna let, hand it over to Angie and let her talk to you about the film while I give you more stuff.
Hello. A lot of what we've been working on is collaboration with different organizations. New Mexico Film Office. We've been working with them. They have a lot of things that are available. The reason you see the City Las Vegas Film Office logo is they asked us to create a logo because they put ads in the Hollywood Reporter and also Variety Magazine. And they wanna highlight all the different towns in New Mexico for film. Another organization that they actually recommended that we work with and they work with is the Association of Film Commissioners International. And this is just the board of the board members. And it's New Zealand, Austria, they're from the United States, Norway, Holland. And they all share ideas, Vancouver. We've been reaching out to local business owners. They also had us ask to find out the local schools that have film programs. Of course, Highlands University, Luna. And right now, it's just West Las Vegas that has a film program. I actually went to West Las Vegas because I couldn't contact anyone. And when I went, they asked me to do a presentation to the students about film. And so, they're very excited about it. There are, the people that come to film, there's programs that are available where students can get training and possibly even funds for the school. So, we'll be working more with them. Also, this is in your packet. This is New Mexico's refundable film production tax credit. You'll see the increases throughout the years.
On that tax credit, so you guys know. So, I recently learned the exact percentage, which is they have to have about 40% of their cast or crew be local. So, if they're shooting here, they do. So, on Facebook, you'll see me a lot of times posting casting call for this or that or whatever it might be, you know, young girl, young man. And it's because they, in order to get the tax incentives, they have to use so much of the locals in order, in order to meet that.
And they have to give back to the community. So, that's where the schools come in as well. They have classes available. They teach about crew and the different positions, chain of command. There's all kinds of things that are available. They have classes, I believe it's on Thursday nights. They teach about film incentives. So, pretty much anyone that's, that's interested in that. This is another one, a film crew advancement program. They have internships for students as well. In fact, one of the interns that they had in their own office is the intern that started the, the RVs for Breaking Bad and the tourism there, which they're, he's getting a second RV. And he also bought a car. And they're matching the paint and all different kinds of things like that. Another part of what we're gonna do and have started doing is working with residents and locations as well as business owners who wanna promote their location. I had told one person that has a business, and he also sent me these pictures that he wants for location photos. We have a lot of work to do as far as that, as far as updating. They really haven't been updated since about 2010. So, we're trying to put that out. So, whoever wants to, to have their business or home inside, outside as a film location. In fact, they send out packets, and I sent all your emails to the New Mexico Film Office. So, anytime that they request locations for Las Vegas, and he sends out a packet, you'll get an email that will say, you know, this has happened. And just so you know how much people are requesting. One of the things they showed us or told us is that film life can last a long time. I haven't presented ever at one of these meetings. I've presented at other places, so I'm not sure if I can ask. But does anyone recognize this? If I say, if you build it, there you go. And it's almost been 30 years that that film came out. Oops, I'm not used to using this program as well, so.
I put the technology on her, too.
So, this is a website they have for builder dreams. They get 100,000 visitors a year. They have a lot of different programs with it if you decide to visit. You can even play, I think, with ballplayers. Another movie that they told us about that increased museum attendance after Night of Museum, 18%, and that was nationwide.
This has a lot to do with the film tourism I was talking about as well and the marketing of it. We're trying to get to teach a lot of the businesses how to be able to use it to their advantage instead of trying to chase them away. They can actually, you know, embrace it, bring it in. And, and at the same time, it helps to increase their, their revenue with their business.
And actually, the Long Meyer Door, the, we've found out that people are coming worldwide just to take a picture in front of that door. And they'll also come from Long Meyer Days that happened in Wyoming, where it was not filmed. And they come here to take pictures. And so, some of the business owners have things that they're promoting. And I went to a meeting where we talked about it and also talked about doing Long Meyer Days and bringing some people. And they're very excited about it. Shawshank Redemption, dark type movie. But they have a whole thing. I mean, they'll even help you plan your trip. They have a Shawshank witch at a restaurant that you can eat. A Shawshank Sunday. And it's really just as creative as people can get to bring that in. So, we plan on strengthening ongoing collaborations with any organizations that are willing to work with us. We've talked also to a lady at the film union. She's going to help us put on a film festival, lend us red carpet and lights and all different kinds of things, gave us so many ideas.
We even wanna look into bringing the Film Hall of Fame here. So, whenever someone goes into the Hall of Fame, they put a new piece up. That represents it, something that they're talking about. At, holding it at Luna now, but of course, we're not sure if that's gonna be the final location because it's still in the works.
And the New Mexico Film Office, this is in your packets as well. They're celebrating 120 years of film. Las Vegas actually has 105 years of film. But on this map, there's, gives you an idea of some of the productions that have been done. Of course, each, each page has many more. And I really don't think it is all of them. What we've been working on is really making the film permitting process go smoother, easier, revising the form, working with different departments. We added a press release that we'll do for the film company. As you know, they're filming now for the TV series, Roswell, New Mexico. One of the things that, as we've been working with the, the location scouts, is they said that this was actually the easiest time that they had in Las Vegas in getting their permitting process. And of course, Christie and Ernest that have also helped us with turning off sprinklers. This past weekend, they did a total blackout scene on the plaza. And they don't allow people on set, but they actually invited us if we wanted to go. So, we took advantage of that opportunity.
We got to eat lamb with them. It was good.
And just continuing the revisions and growth and the rest is yours.
So, we're really, I mean, we, like I say, we could go on and on and on about all the bunch of other stuff and what's going on and, and numbers and things like that. But we just wanna make it as brief as possible and give you guys just some quick numbers and also some little things. If you notice, there's a sticker in your little packets there that have the new film logo. It has, of course, the city tourism logo. There's pens that we've used. And it looks nicer when we go to these job fairs and stuff now because we have the table covers, we have the tents, everything that says city. The city really stands out. You have pens that say city. You have, I mean, so it really represents us in so many ways. It makes a difference on how we look and how we're presenting ourselves as the city. So, that's some things that, that we've really looked into. We're moving forward. If we can get some more films in here to give us more budget, we'll get more stuff.
Counselor Romano has a question.
Going back to your press releases, the social media posts, what's the chain of command as to the approval? Since we don't have a public information officer, how, how does that work?
Right now, the way I do it, if it's, like what we're doing is we're sharing information, then it's easier to do that. But if it's something that's really big, say we're doing a press release for Rotterdam or whatever it might be, the way I do it normally is I'll go to city manager or to mayor or actually, maybe mostly city manager. I go to city manager, and I just make sure that I get all the information right of what needs to be posted, and then we put it out. I, and even with the, like the newsletters, I always try to make sure that I have all the information and make sure it's what we need to put out. Because it, there might be something that she says, no, not at this time. You know, there's something more important in this department I think we need to, to get out. So, it's a lot of communication with the department heads, with the city manager.
Is there a proper procedure that's followed or?
And then, anything anybody wants, they, they all come to me. And then, I make sure that we lay it out properly in the way it should be before.
And of course, you know, we wanna promote all businesses. But I know, you know, there has been concerns promoting some businesses and not others. And the equality in that is.
Normally, typically, we do not promote businesses. The only times we promote businesses is we have some sponsorship programs. So, sometimes it, it'll be part of the sponsorship package that we'll promote them. Or if we're doing a special, say we're doing a special on Casa Neto Hotel for some reason, then that's the reason we'll promote it. But we, typically, we don't promote any businesses. We don't, right now, we don't have a planner or strategy in a way where we can offer advertising to the local companies. But a lot, the majority of what we do is basically probably because they were part of a sponsorship program or, you know, they're, they're a major story of what we're doing.
And then, the other question had to do with the film. As you had mentioned, 40%, they film, but that's 40% New Mexico residents, not, not Las Vegas residents.
Yeah, it is New Mexico residents. However, what they do is they do try to get the majority of them from the town that they're filming in at that, at that time.
I had an opportunity to, to be on Long Meyer, and I guarantee you, there was 25 of us versus, you know, the 200, 300 that were on set that day. So, you know, I don't know.
Did you have to audition for that or did you just?
It was just symmetrical and some of the stuff that you.
You made a good sheriff.
You know, it just, you know, just, just, I mean, it was amazing with the amount of people from out of town that would come to it. And that's, I mentioned the whole percent.
Yeah, we found out, part of the problem with that was that, so with film, you have to be consistent. to be consistent when you're filming. And so some people would come, and they would stay for the first day, but then they wouldn't show for the second day, and it throws the whole consistency of the film out. So they have to make sure that when they're getting people, it's the people that are gonna be able to be there consistently throughout the whole part of whatever scene or part that they're playing. That's why we're trying to do a lot of the education and workshops to let people know here in the community, if you're gonna dedicate yourself, you have to dedicate yourself. And, I mean, it's worth it, it pays good money, but...
Yes. Not that good.
Depends on what you work... It depends on what the film production is looking for as well. For instance, my husband would get offered extra parts, but they wanted him to do different things. One of the things they wanted him to do was to cut his hair and shave his face, and he wouldn't do it, so he didn't get that.
Did they make you do that?
But no, it'd be, you know, there, I mean, as you know, there's a lot of people, you know, on social media, you know, asking for jobs, and it could be one day, two days, you know, that's more than coming to the community.
And one of the reasons that we're having this presentation tonight is because that's one of the requirements for us to try to continue to bring more and more filming into Las Vegas is for, to do the presentation to mayor and council, and to have it out on our website so that we can publish it a little bit more and really advertise a little bit more. And we, by doing this, then we get, we reap the benefits in a sense of the filming industry.
Yes, also because, we just went to the film summit, and that's part of the requirements of becoming state sanctioned. So we're both state sanctioned, of course. Angie's the main one, and I'm kinda just there in case they need somebody. But part of that was that, and then we're gonna be, since we finally, we got through all the summits, except for one coming up in Albuquerque, it's gonna really move fast. And so we wanted to do this presentation to you tonight, because by October, who knows, we can have Phase Two already going through the film campaign. So we wanted to make sure, we'll let you know what was going on before you start seeing everything, and then, you know, you're questioning this after the fact. It's better to give it all to you, well, not all of it, but at least that you know what's going on, 'cause like I said, there's a lot going on. And the same with the marketing, because you're gonna be seeing a lot of things. For example, this is just one of the, you know, the small banners that's going around for different events and such. And as you can see, it says Old Child's New Adventures, like I had talked about. And so, you know, we're just trying to keep it consistent with everything with, and if you notice, the film logo also includes the city tourism logo, so it all stays within, within each other. But, so Counselor Howell, any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Maruho, Ms. Lister, good presentation. What budget line item are you working on to fund all this?
Right now, this is coming through our department, 'cause it's just very minimal. Like I say, we're only paying for the website and stuff right now. Of course, all the work comes from us, so it comes from our budget. But as far as, like, when it comes to, when it comes to, like, getting promotional stuff, a lot of this was approved through the lodgers tax board, so they allowed us to get so much. Of course, we already met what they had approved, so now we're looking to see what we do to be able to continue to do it.
That was my next question. Has the lodgers tax seen this presentation, and have they gave their blessings on it?
Yeah, they haven't seen this particular presentation, but I have presented to the lodgers tax board.
'Cause so they know about this.
We're gonna have to come to the board for you.
Okay, my other thing is, and Ms. Lister mentioned the Film Hall of Fame, or Virginia, you mentioned the Film Hall of Fame. Were you able to attend the workforce summit that I had mentioned?
Yes.
Did you meet Ms. Nani?
Yes, she's the one that offered to help us with the film festival.
Good, good, yeah. Well, I spoke with President Serna when he was there, and also, I really think that, Madam Mayor, I think that we need to really show our interest in the Film Hall of Fame in regards to showing them that we are interested in it.
I believe we have, correct?
And I think my, my request would be to strike up a meeting with Senator Campos and Representative Salzah, because, and the mayor, and the community development, whoever the players are gonna be. Because we need to let them know our interest, and plus, I believe the capital, what is it?
Projects.
Project funding is due real soon to the legislators. And if we show their interest and really work together to get it, I think we would really benefit from it.
I met already individually with Senator Campos about six weeks ago.
Oh, good.
Regarding the film industry, so we had a very lengthy, about two and a half hour discussion about everything that's occurring in the city.
Sure. Well, I spoke to him today, and he said that he'd be interested, again, meeting with all the players. And they were talking about the site at Luna, new auditorium, and because it's nice and large, and some of the film, what is it, the Red Dawn was filmed over there at Luna, so...
I'm sorry, no, I'm not taking comments from the audience, just from the council. Thank you very much.
But I think really, we need to strike up that meeting.
If you and folks are looking to that at...
Yeah, we're definitely gonna set that up. We're looking to set that up with everybody coming up. We just, like I said, before we did anything, we kinda wanted to let you guys know where we're going. But yes, oh, I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but anyway, I had already talked to one of the Hall of Fame members. And so we had talked about discussing that. If Luna's gonna work out, then it would be nice there, and we'd be willing to help out if we need to in different ways, and especially with the marketing and putting it into our film tourism and our guidebooks, which we're gonna get reprinted and such. But we did have that conversation, and I will set up a meeting with everybody once.
And we did sponsor the workforce summit as well.
Right. And that nine million dollar, nine million views figure that you showed up there will probably triple, and once we get this Hall of Fame here at, in Las Vegas.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you, Virginia. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council.
Thank you, ladies, very, very much.
Thank you, Virginia, thank you, Angie. The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor...
Sorry, we have one more thing, because we also do events. We have some little invitations here for you guys. I should've probably gave these to you first, so that you can have your little sugar mesh during our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the City Manager's report. And on this report, the first item we have is the presentation by Mr. Robert Archuleta in Virginia, Maruho, on the Old City Hall, and where we are on the assessment and how we need to follow through with it. I know Mr. Archuleta is in pain right now, so he is wanting to, to report, and...
Good evening, how are you doing? Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Yes, I hurt my back, so I'm moving a little slow. So just to give an update on Old City Hall, that is the building, that's directly across the gambol, as we all know. Earlier in the year, I wrote a grant to the Historic Preservation Division for a CLG grant, which is Certified Local Government. As we know, we are a certified local government community, meaning that because of our historical significance, we are considered by HPDA as CLG. So I wrote a grant, and subsequently was awarded a grant for a conservation assessment of Old City Hall, which is also known as a high-reach inspection. So what they did is they brought in high-reach equipment and did an assessment of the tower, the upper levels of the building, and then all around, as much as they could with the high-reach equipment. That was done by Atkins Olson Shade. They are architects out of Santa Fe, and they, I did a procurement, and they were the ones that won the quote, so they were subsequently awarded to do that conservation assessment. In that assessment, they provided some findings that are concerning regarding that building. The first thing is improper drainage has contributed significantly to deterioration of the outer walls of the building. So for example, on the north side, facing the Father George Alasad Center, you can see, like, step, step cracks on the side of the walls, which they indicate is probably foundation settlement. So what's happening is the water is leaking on the inside and the outside of the building, and it's causing settlement damage. Also, what you have is you have some very large stones above the windows that kinda sit like this, and there are some small pieces of stone. So if that small stone breaks off, the large stone is gonna come tumbling down. So those are examples of some of the deterioration. Also, there's improper drainage. Some of the downspouts on the top are causing water damage around the building, both inside and out. And also, the outriggers towards the, the second top of the building, some of the stones are moving out towards the street. So their recommendation is to fence off the building immediately, because it poses a danger to the public. So the second part of the grant is to do some emergency repairs, so utilizing the match funds. So we have, when you write a grant CLG, you have the amount that you apply for, and then you have to match it one hundred percent. So utilizing those funds, we're gonna do approximately twenty-four thousand dollars worth of emergency repairs, which isn't gonna really go very far. It's essentially gonna just kinda band-aid the building. The good news is, is that, you know, there's a, there's a lot of community members, a lot of people interested in really restoring that building. It was built in eighteen ninety-three, it's considered the first municipal building in the state. So it has a lot of potential, but it does need new electrical, new plumbing, new heating. Also, that's concerning, this part of the building, is the pigeons are back. They broke the windows. Those windows are very thin, they're very old, so the pigeons got in, and now there's pigeon guano on the second floor again, which poses a hazard for anybody that's in that building, and it needs to be removed. It was removed maybe three or four years ago, and now the pigeons are back. So that's kind of the update I have. If there's any questions, staff of questions?
Questions, girls? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Well, continue to move forward with the rehabilitation of that building. Did I speak to the city manager? I think things are looking good with your budget funding, correct?
Well, we're gonna continue to look for, seek funding, to see if we can restore as much as possible and move forward. But the first thing is the emergency repairs that needs to, that needs to happen, and those, those will be happening pretty quickly, so we just wanted to let mayor and council know if you see any kind of activity. It's because we're going to try to, try to keep it where it's at and not cause any further damage.
We really wanna stabilize it, 'cause especially those stones at the top, they're pretty high up, and they're already about three inches out, and so if they were to come out any further, on someone that can...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Archuleta, Ms. Maruho, I appreciate your really looking into the city, Old City Hall, but my other concern would be the, our library. Are we doing any maintenance work over there? 'Cause that, you know, their air conditioning is out or not working properly. There, you know, there's a lot of issues there that has been brought up to us, but we haven't, don't have the funding for it, or what it is that is not being taken care of.
Counselor Howell, members of the council, Madam Mayor, we have taken care of the air conditioning. We are, yes, we have. We've installed, I believe, four, three?
Two units were installed and papered by the friends of the library, and the other construction work in halfway along soon with the library is the rehabilitation of the elevator.
Well, that's great.
And so that's ongoing, and we've, we had received quotes. We were getting, trying to acquire quotes to get the elevator going, and that'll be coming up fairly quickly. So we're gonna, we have that, we have our public facilities working on that, and then we'll move on to the next project.
I just wasn't updated on it, but thank you.
I apologize, yes.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council?
The next, the next item on Under City Managers' report was, thank you, Robert. He did finalize the ICIP plan and was submitted on, hold on here, on September fourteenth. So we did submit with the, I believe, the listing that went to mayor and council as well. Did you all receive?
That's what I was asking, and Counselor Howell said he did not receive the listings.
It was in our mailbox.
Oh, maybe that's why.
It's in your mail, I'm sure, it's in the mail. But we did include the final listing, and so if you will review it and then let me know if there's any revisions or updates. As we said before, it's a planning document, it's updated on a continuous basis, and if you will let me know if there are any issues with any of the projects, then we'll, I'll go back and I'll speak to Mr. Archuleta and see what we need to do.
Correct? Yes. And so if, once you take a look at that, if you will, get back to me.
The next item is the, the, this is actually a good thing. We did get a letter on August the twenty-seventh regarding our final budget, and that was approved by DFA. And so that was the, the, the final budget approval. We don't need any further resolutions or any further approvals from anyone unless we have a bar, and we will be getting adjustments, but we tried to include all of the funding that we could, so that we wouldn't have to come to you, at least for the first quarter. And so we are good to go with our, with our final two thousand nineteen budget. The next item was the, there was a possibility of a utility rate increase, and we have, along with Maria Gilberti, who was the utilities director, and myself, we have decided that we're going to defer the utility rate of the CPI. The ordinance does, has, we have a couple of issues with the utility rate CPI. That one was going to increase the rates by, I believe, three point four percent on each utility, with the exception of the gas. But because we have a study, a rate study that is, that will be coming up, I would like to see if we can hold it up for at least a month, two months, meet with utilities, meet with our finance director as well, myself, and just assess the budgets, the cash, and any other issues that might come up. And I'm gonna defer this over to Ms. Gilbert. Thank you.
Mayor, Council.
And I don't know if I've...
She pretty much said all I was gonna say.
I apologize.
No, I am gonna be meeting with the utilities director. We do have ordinances that do give us some direction, but we're gonna go ahead and meet and look at our cash balances and take into consideration that if we do this rate assessment study, most likely with the reduction in some of the commitments for the city, hopefully we could have an adjustment in favor of our customers. And I think we'd rather take a look at that first before we make any of these CPI adjustments, to make sure we have all the information first. So I'll be meeting with the city manager.
Ms. Gilberti, how are you going to address the issue that three, in the last bill, billing statement, there was three ordinances that were attached to that billing statement that there were gonna be a rate increase?
Yes.
So I think that we need to make publicly, let the people know that that's not gonna happen.
Yes.
I would suggest at this point in time that you go to the radio, or send Ms. Gilberti to the, to the radio Friday, and you need to get the word out. Mr. Brooks, if you could help us out with that, that would be very helpful, we'd appreciate that.
We have, we have reversed that, so there are no rate increases. We have reversed rate increase, and anybody who did get a rate increase will go ahead and adjust their account.
But the people have to know, because...
Yes, absolutely.
Just get the word out, let them know, 'cause they, I did receive a lot of calls.
We did put the rates, the rate increases on the back of the bill, so we'll make sure that, that's another place. And it's good to know people are reading the back of the bill, 'cause I've always been told nobody ever reads the back of the bill, so...
We want, we want to stay consistent with our ordinance...
We did put the rates, the rate increases on the back of the bill, so we'll make sure. That's another place. And it's good to know people are reading the back of the bill, because I've always been told nobody ever reads the back of the bill, so.
We want, we want to stay consistent with our ordinance, but we also want to be, we'll also be looking at the ordinance to see if there's any other kind of adjustments that we can make. And I think between all of the parties, we can certainly do that. So we just need a little bit of time to do it.
So you two will be working together, I hope, in the future?
Absolutely, yes.
On any CPIs?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying basically we could defer the ordinance?
Yes, we can.
Right.
See, what you have to look at when you have a, you look at your CPI, you look at your ordinance, but you also have to look at the current funds. If the funds are healthy and there's essentially no real need for an increase, you don't automatically just impose that increase. You have to look at your actual fund. And then that has to go, that has to be run through your city manager.
Actually, but we can impose the CPI. We still have that, we still have the ability, if in fact we need to impose it. It doesn't say we have to do it at any one particular time. It just says the imposition of the CPI, but it doesn't give us a specific date or time. And so we can look at that ordinance, and then, of course, we're going to try to bring in the rate study as well. And so we'll be incorporating all of those.
Thank you. Well, it's going to be one of the things I had requested, that I want to have the utilities department, Ms. Gilberti, and we discussed is look at the current rate studies, because I'm getting a lot of concerns from the community with regards to the bills, and that's understandable. I, as you know, your dad and I, the father and I voted against that rate increase, not that we were opposed to it entirely, but I just felt it was a huge imposition of rate tax, taxes, or not, probably rates. So gas rates, sewer rates, the whole spectrum. So now we have an opportunity, because our fund balances look quite healthy...
They are very healthy.
To reevaluate the whole situation, Ms. Gilberti, and Ms. Gairos, Tana will probably be involved in the process to see if we can work with the constituency. Like to see, of course, the, for us to start with the residential and then move on to the provincial, Mrs. Sir.
I probably support that, you know, not having any increases. It's just the policy part again, that we claim sometimes that we have to follow policy, and then we don't. So that's sort of my point.
On the, on the CPI, we don't always have to impose, and we have the ability and we have that opportunity to impose. But if the fund balances are healthy, then we don't necessarily have to.
And that's one thing we need to look at. As a matter of fact, we are going to be meeting with finance director, the utilities, myself. And then once we come up with a, with a resolution to this, because I myself do not want to go against any kind of ordinance as well. And so what we'll be doing right after that is meeting with our attorney, having her review the ordinance, and then just see how we, if we, if we impose and how we move forward with it.
But ultimately, it'll come to this body?
Absolutely, sir, yes. Any kind of change that we make to any, anything, we would bring it back to the government.
Historically, we have held off on imposition. So just so you...
The, okay. The next item is the, our 2018 audit is ongoing, and so if there are any issues or any concerns, we have our auditors, and am I correct? And I don't know how long they'll be here. So we have two weeks of auditors, and if there's any issues that, any concerns, by all means let our finance director know, and we'll move forward with those as well.
Okay.
And the last thing, and it's...
I had a question on that. Been on the scoreboard, there was conflict of interest statements and other paperwork that we had to sign with board members. Do we have to do that as councilors here?
I am sure that there is some...
They haven't provided me the documents yet.
But they will. But they will send them to you. They'll see.
I'll provide.
We'll provide them, and then get them, you can get them back to the auditors. I believe the audit is due on December 50. Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments, councilor?
You said the, the budget was, has a final approval. That won't come before us again?
No.
For final?
Well, you approved it July the 26th or the 27th. You approved the final.
I'm sorry. Did you get a copy of the report, the letter? Did they get a copy of the letter?
No, I had it here, and what I'll do is I'll put a copy of, I will put a...
Give me your copy of the letter.
Yes, of course.
And then the other question, because I looked for it online, and it's not online yet. When would that happen?
That'll happen right after this letter that goes, goes to you, and then we'll get it online. Okay.
Questions, comments?
Okay. The last item on the agenda is a, it's a happy but a sad thing, is our wonderful interim chief of police has submitted his resignation effective, next year or year after?
We're hoping.
He has submitted his resignation effective September 28 of this year, although I, we know that we can always count on him, and we wish him, and we will have him at a later meeting with a more formal presentation, Madam Mayor, members of the council. But we wish him well. He, he has done the world for the city of Las Vegas, and I know he'll do well for San Miguel County as well. So we're, we're happy for him, but we're sad for us. And I'll leave the floor to, to our chief.
My name's...
Ooh, it's choked up.
I guess it's, I tell the guys I've been telling them, it's hard to, it's hard to go because I have such a bond with the guys in the department and kind of a little out of the spot, I guess. But, you know, I feel like I'm moving on to another part of my life, and they are going to be close by. I just, you know, I, I'll be available for any questions or anything that I can do to help the department continue moving forward. I'll be there for all the guys, like I said, and I'm close with a bunch of women. I just appreciate the opportunity that I was afforded to, to get to be at the head of the helm, you know, over such a great group of individuals and respected individuals in the community. And I thank you for that. I thank you for the opportunity.
Chief, I want to thank you for your level of professionalism, your commitment to the community, to this administration, your dedication and your incredible service to the city of Las Vegas. We are going to miss you. You're an amazing man, and I hope that we can still see you out there, and if we can still continue to collaborate and work together, congratulations, and I wish you all the best.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. That concludes our city, my city managers' report. The next item on the agenda is the finance report.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
And Mayor. Revenue and expenditure reports for the month of August, which is 16.66% of the year. I could have rounded it up to 17.
Sorry.
But let's just say 17. Total revenues...
Precise, precision.
Normally, I would have rounded it. Actual revenues for the month were 1,867,786, 16% of budgeted revenues. What's bringing that, it would have been much higher if property taxes weren't so low collected. Total expenditures for the year-to-date, 1,876,646, 14% usage of the budget. Enterprise funds. Utility revenues are well within the ranges of 17, 18, 19%. Gas naturally is down only 7% of budgeted revenues, being that it's summer and gas is, isn't much. I myself asked my husband to barbecue one. Don't mark the house. Total expenditures for the enterprise, 2,121,601, 14% of total budgeted expenditures. The recreation center, 94,162 total revenues, which includes 66,640 of a transfer coming in from the general fund. Total expenditures, 104,489, 14% of budgeted expenditures and revenues collected. Any questions?
Questions, please. Counselor Casey?
Just, what was the 66,640 general fund transfer? The purpose of that? And the...
Well, actually, that's the available balance of budget, and the total transfers was 123,250. Transfers are going now for GRT to fund the debt service fund for the recreation center loan and into the, we also do a transfer to the internal service funds for our IT department.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I have no other questions. Any other question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Vega? Ms. Gairos?
Yes.
Since the statement was made that we have a healthy fund balance, what, can you bring me up to date on what our plan is to get our roads fixed?
I was talking about the enterprise fund.
Pardon me?
The enterprise fund. You're just speaking to capital projects, the public works fund. No, when I made that statement, I was talking about the enterprise fund.
Okay.
Okay, that's different than the capital projects fund.
Okay, so how is our capital project fund?
The capital project funds, we're looking at the paving of several streets. I think we have the King and the West National Street coming up. We're working on that one as well. We're working on the, the Mountain View, the Mountain View Drive is being looked at as well. And I believe that there is, Christie's not here, but I believe that there's also a plan in the spring to do an overlay on some of the main roads as well. We're also looking at completing that asset management plan on half of our, well, I believe on a third of our main streets, so that we can submit an application into CDBG, because that was one of the criterias that we needed. So those, that is ongoing as well. But there is a plan in early spring to do some type of, of maintenance and upkeep on some of the major roads. And I'm not too sure how much it is, and I'll get the specifics for you. I can get, I'll get the specifics from Christie or Larkford, because I know that that is a plan that is ongoing as well.
I'd like to make a statement that I think the councilors should put into writing their priorities in their districts on what road that needs really big attention. I think that priorities sometimes may not, or our priorities may not be listened to or heard as much. So I think it's very important that we give you the priorities that we have in our district, so you can make your plan on what the priorities would be.
I think if each one of you just takes, takes your, looks at your wards and maybe submits one or two of the roads that you would like to be, that you would like us to take a look at, I'll be glad to accept that and then review it with our public facilities on that.
Okay, thank you. Every morning that I drive this route and on 11th and Douglas, my car goes like that. The hole is getting bigger and bigger, so really need to take a look at that, please.
11th and Douglas?
11th and Douglas.
Okay. I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Gairos, first of all, what is the status of the asset management plan?
The asset management plan right now, as I believe I stated the last time, is that we, we can't, we can't complete the entire project because of the funding, so we are going to complete it in phases. We have, I believe we have a cost estimate to do that, and we're going to be looking at some of the major roads. And I, we have a listing right now of some of the major roads. If you people have, if you people have anything, if you will submit that to me, we can at least take a look at those as well. And we're going to take, take those, the listing of those streets and those roads, and then have, have this company come in and do an assessment of those roads, and that way they'll be available, and will be available for funding.
How will the governing bodies request to fix certain rules affect the, one, the ICIP, the cash balances of those funds, and also the cash matches?
The, the, what we'll do is we were, what we'll do is we'll look at your, your priorities, and of course, those will take, those will take time, because those have to be included in the ICIP. So the one that is in, included in the ICIP right now is the Hot Springs Boulevard project, because that one is the utilities, the utility update plus the paving of the road. What I'm talking about on the priorities from each one of the wards is that you prioritize, send them to me, and then what we'll do is, we may not be able to do a complete paving, but we can do at least a repair and maintenance on those, on those streets. And that's what we can commit to. So if you will get that listing to me as quickly as possible, but let's put a deadline of early, the end of the first week in October, and that way we have them, and then maybe we can start looking at those a little bit closer.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
Thank you very much.
The next item is the consent agenda item, items.
Okay, what is it, on the board? Counselor Casey?
Madam Mayor, I move the approval of the entire consent agenda and ask that the city park read them into the record paper.
Thank you very much.
So good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent agenda consists of the following items. Number one, approval to award bid number 2019-01 to Electric Horsemen Incorporated for the Las Vegas Municipal Airport Precision Approach Path Indicator Installation. Item two, approval of OCAM Engineers Incorporated Task Order for Las Vegas Leak Detection Phase Two. Item three, approval to award request for bid number 2018-24 for the Eighth Street and Hospital Chico Drive Waterline Project, Mahaze Plumbing and Heating Incorporated. Item four, approval of auto state travel to Washington, DC. Item five, approval of application for 2018 JAG Distribution Grant for Las Vegas Police Department and San Miguel County Sheriff's Office in order to purchase supplies. Item number six, approval of resolution number 18-36, Declaring Growth Abuse, Alcohol Abuse and Addiction: A Public Health Crisis in the City of Las Vegas, New Mexico. And item number seven, approval of resolution number 18-38, 2020 through 2024 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP, for the City of Las Vegas Senior Center. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. We'll call.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Unibody Jr.? I have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Unibody Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Counselor, Ms. Mayor.
My first question, have you hired somebody at the museum and the municipal courts for maintenance?
We've hired twice and have not been successful. So I believe as, it's in...
Review again.
It's once, once again, we are in review and reviewing the applications. So we have, we've tried to fill that position, I believe, twice, or three times.
What are you doing in the interim as far as, because one of the concerns has been the restaurants, sometimes they've gotten really, really bad. I know employees there have to do things on their own for me.
Let me...
Is, do we have somebody that, to go help out?
We can get somebody. If we haven't gotten public facilities involved in it, we will get public facilities in the morning, and let me, let me make a note of that, and we'll get that.
And my other question, I think we all probably have this concern...
And I know we could probably, you know, address, you know, each, you know, each one of us probably has one property or two properties that we have concern over. But the code enforcement, there's a lot of vacant properties with overgrowth, overgrowth of weeds and trees. And, you know, there's alleyways. You know, and I know we could give you a couple of properties, but I think that's unfair. I don't know, can somebody, you know, take, while they're driving around and check some of the overgrowth? I know it's tough, but...
Well, we've done, we are doing that. We, we have our code enforcement, especially now that we have our two other enforcement officers. So what we'll, what we have been doing is sending them out and getting some of these. There's a process in place. But if you have any addresses, by all means, please let me know. And then I will turn around and give them over to community development. And chances are, they've already, they're already working on a letter either to the property owner. But I will make sure that they do. And I know, I've seen quite a few of them, and alleyways, that there's Chinese elm overgrowth in a lot of the areas. And so I know that Levi has been hard at work in trying to get that caught up. But by all means, I don't hesitate to give me the addresses, because I'll be glad to also send them over to code enforcement. There's a process in place, but we can at least start the process.
Okay, and then my last question is, I'm most faced with personnel and...
Personnel?
Not, not really personnel, but I just want to ask this question is, is there recording of employees, audio of any sort that you're aware of?
None that I'm, none that I'm aware of, no sir.
Okay, because there's been more than one that just, you know, they feel that maybe they are. But then I know there's a process. If you feel they're doing something wrong, then you have to, you know, make them aware that you might be recording them. I'm just, is, I just want to make sure that nothing like that's happening.
I am not aware that there is any, any, and I guess I would defer that over to the HR director.
Not that I'm aware of. During investigations, of course, we do that, but...
Yeah, and I know that, but okay. I just didn't know if it was, I just wanted to ask it in public to make sure that that's not, that there's been no directive or anything.
And that, that would be something that the HR director and her staff would, if there's an investigation going on, then of course, they proceed with, with their proper procedures, but...
But directors or anybody under you?
I am not aware of any directors. That is a process, so.
Thank you very much, Counselor Casey.
Thank you. I want to thank the Public Works Department, because they've been doing a really good job of clearing up elm trees that are everywhere.
They're all over, yes.
They've done a great job for that.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate that. It makes the city look much better.
Thank you.
I also wanted to talk a little bit about code enforcement. And I'm so happy that we have two other people, because I know that Levi is totally overwhelmed just for the number of code enforcement complaints that I get from constituents. And I call them up and I say, Levi, I feel kind of bad telling them, you know, and this one, and check this one, and what's the status on this one. But I'm, I'm very happy that we do have somebody there to help them out, because we do have a lot of properties that have a lot of junk just everywhere. Alt mattresses, carts of cars, all kinds of things. And the breeding grounds for spunks and all kinds of other women. And so it really becomes a health and safety issue. I have a question on the job fair. Did we get a good turnout there? And do we have any promise of filling any of the vacancies that we have?
Hi, me. As I understand it, we had a couple of employees that attended, and we handed out several applications. I know Utilities was there as well, answering questions for their positions. But we did hand out a lot of information and had a lot of questions. So hopefully, we get some in return.
And my last question is, we're losing a lot of money on building permits and stuff like that, because we don't have a building inspector. And so is there any hope of hiring one anytime soon? Is it being advertised?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Counselor Howell, that was one of the positions, I believe, that was funded, was included in our final budget. And so I just need to meet with the fire chief.
I have a question. Is that a nonessential position?
I don't know.
Check it out.
I will, I will, but that was a funded position. And so what we'll do is take a look at it and meet with the fire chief and just see how we, how we go about it.
Because, you know, a lot of people have to go to...
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe. And it's a problem for a lot of people to have to go all the way over there. And they have to wait for the inspector to get over here. And sometimes that takes weeks and delays the whole process. So it would be wonderful if we could get that advertised and get somebody here at all possible.
I'll be glad to look at that.
Thank you. You have any other questions? Counselor?
I just have a question to the she had asked on that. You talked about, you know, that, that position within the fire department, but I believe that one was for business inspections, right?
I don't know.
Sure.
Manager.
Yeah, I know.
By me, the position that we're talking about through the fire department is a building inspector in the fire aspect. I think what you're talking about is to CIB, so those are totally separate.
That's more regulatory, so we have to be cautious like that. And we have to look to see if it is nonessential, because I believe that position is a nonessential position that was created years back. So we'd have to look into that.
And that building inspector was in fact in the community development budget. And so I'll take a look at that. I believe there is a position in there as well. So we'll get, we'll, we'll look at the both of them, because I know he had one, and then I believe community development.
And possibly we can share them, is what I'm thinking.
Right, they work close together, but it's just two separate positions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please continue. Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gallegos, I don't know who this question would be to you or to Ms. Gilvery. But the water standard report, how often is it submitted?
Counselor Mayor, Madam Mayor, are you speaking about the CCR?
I don't know what the CCR means.
That's the annual report that we put out about the quality of our water.
Right, okay.
Provided to the community.
Have we submitted?
Consumer Confidence Report. Yes, sir. It's, it's provided every year, usually around July. And it's submitted to, we have a stack we usually out at different locations. We provide it to all apartment complexes and all residents. We're required to make sure everybody gets got. And we put it in the newspaper as well.
Because I, I was asked that question. And the reason why this person asked me this question is because she read somewhere that we have not sent that report of the quality of our water for, for the last four years.
That would be incorrect. We are within standards. We've done it every year, as long as I've been here, we've done it every year. It's an annual report.
Okay.
What does the water quality look like? What is our water quality?
Our water quality meets all standards, exceeds all standards. We have no, we had no hits on lead, copper, any of the major constituents with major MCLs. It was all well within EK standards.
I'll have to ask this person where she found that information.
There is actually a website that, in this industry, that we, they talk about. It's actually funded by a company that wants to sell filters. And so they do try and find ways to say, your city's water is not good. Then buy our filter and it'll take care of it. And it's a, it's a well-known scam to try to people to be concerned about the water.
This person specifically mentioned the report has not been sent in for the last four years. That's why I was asking that question.
If it's the, if it's the CCR, the one where we are required...
What other report is there?
That's the only one that I know of that's an annual water quality report, or water quality, quality report, period.
Okay, I'll have to check it out.
We have on water, we have monthly reporting that we send off to the state. We, on wastewater as well, and actually, some of their reporting is weekly. And we meet all of our standards. We have not received any hits, any violations on any of our reporting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I also, Ms. Gallegos, can you give us an update on the Samaritan House status?
We are in the process of developing a letter to the Samaritan House to list out some of the requirements that are, that they need to meet. I believe that they are submitting, or they have submitted an application for a permit for the Mills Avenue, the Mills Avenue site.
And just that one site?
Yes, sir.
Or they were supposed to do two?
They actually, they're submitting for one that I know of. But there are some issues as far as them needing some, needing to meet some of the requirements that we have.
Yeah, at the Mill site?
Yes, sir.
Right. They weren't, they didn't apply for the, what is it?
Seventh Street?
Yeah.
They did, but that building will not be ready. It is, it needs some updating and some remodeling, of what I understand from Mr. Lyons. And so we're going to be collaborating with several of the departments to see how we, how we issue out the requirements that he needs to, that they need to meet. And then we'll meet with them as well.
You know, I, I'm glad that we're working with them.
We're hopeful that we can work with them, absolutely.
Because we, this community would be in sad shape if we lose them.
Yes.
We're doing all that, Counselor Howell.
We, we are really trying to work with them and the his staff. And so we're moving forward. I'm excited about having our attorney here on Monday, because we are really going to need her help.
Thank you.
Counselor, you are thinking, Counselor?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Gallegos, I just want to thank the street department and code enforcement, all the work they've done. There is, there is a lot affecting buildings and weeds and this and that. And I want to know if our dams almost are in, our banner are in.
The what?
Mayor, councilors, madam manager, I will give you an update on that. It is almost ready. The spillway is done, the tower is done, and the bridge was coming down Mills on my way over here. Or half the bridge technically was going down Mills. So tomorrow, we will install the bridge. They'll start the process of installing the bridge. There is one area that is going to be the layout. We had to make a change, and that is the outlet line. It's going to be slip line. We were going to put a new pipe inside the old pipe. When contractors came on scene and they did some more surveying of it, there's a slight deviation in it, which won't allow them to slip line it with a solid pipe. So they're having to get a more flexible pipe. I think it added about $50,000 to the project. And it did add some time, because we had to go through the process of a change order, getting approval, and then ordering the new material to replace it. So that's, that's so far, it's the only change order, the major change order issue that we've had. And that will delay it a little bit, but we're still planning before the end of the year.
Thank you.
And Ms. Gilvery, you will monitor the change orders to make sure we stay within the 20%, correct?
We are.
Okay. Ms. Gallegos, I believe we have need for executive session, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'd like to see if I get a motion to go into executive session.
These are matters pertaining to the threatened or pending litigation.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Casey?
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session to discuss matters subject to the attorney-client privilege on pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the city may be involved as permitted by Section 10-15-1, H.7 of the New Mexico Open Leaves Act 1978 in New York.
Thank you very much, Judge.
Second.
Counselor Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
And most by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carried.
Okay, let's convene into the city manager's office, is that correct?
Yes.